All right, everyone, thanks for coming out. I'm going to call to order the DeKalb City Council Regular Meeting of September 26, 2022. Roll call, please.
Morris. Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
Awesome, and just for the record, two Alderman Perkins and Alderwoman Morris let us know they would not be able to be present tonight ahead of time, which is always great. All right, without further ado, I will take, there he is, Mr. Hyveed to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Shadow Gentry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Shadow. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion, I'd like to modify the agenda to, one, add under Presentations, a proclamation for the Drury family, which I will read, and then also, I'd like to add an executive session for the approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss personnel as provided for in five ILCS 120 slash two, C1. Could I have a motion to modify the agenda with those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six yes.
So point of order, since we made the motion and seconded the modification of the agenda, do I now need to approve the agenda? Yes. All right, so now I would take a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six yes.
All right, the agenda has been approved. All right, I have two proclamations to read. First is Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through the 15th, 2022. So whereas the City of DeKalb is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas DeKalb residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and know how to respond, and whereas DeKalb residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas DeKalb residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas DeKalb's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas DeKalb residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind DeKalb residents it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout DeKalb, and I urge all people of DeKalb to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of DeKalb's Fire and Emergency Services. I really appreciate the Fire Department for creating this proclamation. Definitely, I know myself personally with the carbon dioxide detectors that I have, as well as the smoke alarms that I have in my house, especially when I had my kids in the home, it always gave me a warm fuzzy, knowing that those are in place, and I would change my batteries regularly, Chief Thomas, wherever you are. There you are. All right, I also have another proclamation I'd like to read. This one was, it was really cool. So there is a family in town that reached out to me, and the parents, or you could call them the grandparents, or you could call them the great-grandparents, Maury and Joan Drury, celebrated their 70th wedding anniversary, which if you can imagine, I'm at 30, and that's 40 more years past, and the two of them are, they seem like they're 30 years younger than they are when you meet them. But I had the honor to go out to the party that they had at the Knights, no, it wasn't Knights of Columbus, the Moose Lodge, and they had a huge party, it was probably 100 people showed up on Saturday, just to celebrate what an accomplishment that was, and they've been together seven years, 70 years, they grew up here in the community, or they got married here, spent their entire time in DeKalb, had a business, Drury Plumbing. I mean, it's just one of those things where it was hard not to be awe-inspired by that level of commitment that they had. So it was my honor to be able to come out, I wrote a proclamation for them, and I also presented them with a key to the City of DeKalb, which was really cool. So I'm going to read that proclamation for the public record, they have a copy of it, but I also just wanted to make sure we enter it to the public record. So whereas Maury and Joan Drury are two of the finest citizens of the City of DeKalb because of their commitment to each other, their family, and our community, whereas Maury and Joan Drury, having celebrated their 70th anniversary, have set an example of commitment to a relationship and to an oath they took with each other of commitment that all of us should aspire to, whereas Maury and Joan Drury, having raised a family of four children here in the City of DeKalb, were active in their lives, as seen in their attendants at many DeKalb Barbs, sporting events, also now have six grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren, and by the way, they all still live here in the City of DeKalb, which is incredible. Whereas Maury and Joan Drury started a local business, Drury Plumbing, here in DeKalb, and operated it for many years through hard work and caring for their customers, whereas Maury and Joan Drury still, after all these years, remain here in the City of DeKalb, continuing to support their family and their community. Therefore, in honor of two special people who have set the bar high for myself and my fellow residents of DeKalb by being an incredible example of what commitment can truly look like, I, Cohen Barnes, as Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 21st as Maury and Joan Drury Day. Come on. Yeah, it just shows, when we all think we're doing an amazing job and we've got it dialed in, you hear an example like that and realize, each and every one of us, there's probably more that we can do for our families, for each other, and for our community. All right, moving on to public participation, I have a bunch of sheets filled out for a particular agenda item, so I'll wait and I'll call you all up during that time. Moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments, we have none, and then moving to the Approval of the Minutes, number one, minutes submitted by the City Clerk, we have none, number two, minutes submitted by the Recording Secretary, which are the minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of September 12th, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve the Recording Secretary's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six yes.
The minutes have been approved. Now moving on to Agenda Item H, Consent Agenda, number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through September 12th, 2022, in the amount of $2,656,612. Number two, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report, August 2022, and number three, Resolution 2022-087, authorizing the execution of a workers' compensation lump sum petition in order in the amount of $67,558.75 for James Sitzma. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
All right, the Consent Agenda passes. Moving on to Agenda Item I, Public Hearings, we have none, and now moving on to Agenda Item J, which all of you are here for, Consideration of a New Crime-Free Initiative. I do have a few speakers that I will call forward. As a reminder, you have three minutes to list your comments, I will stop you after three minutes. That's just the rule that we have here at City Council, so make sure you keep yourself concise and brief. That should be plenty of time, because it usually is for you to get out what it is that you want to comment on. And with that, I think it's, is it Neely Erickson? Wonderful, yes, please, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Barnes and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Neely Erickson, and I am the Government Affairs Director for the Illinois Realtors, here today on behalf of local area Realtors who are members of the Hometown Association of Realtors. We appreciate the discussion being held tonight regarding consideration of a new crime-free initiative, and are thankful to city staff and electeds for seeking ways to improve community safety. All we are asking is that the Crime-Free Housing Lease Addendum, which a violation triggers the new proposed crime-free initiative, be updated to specify that the lease addendum shall be interpreted and enforced in accordance with the Illinois Human Rights Act. Additionally, that an arrest record, as defined in Section B-5 of the section of the Illinois Human Rights Act, would not be evidence of a violation to the lease addendum. Local area housing providers and Realtors can confront serious human rights complaints under Illinois state law because the DeKalb Crime-Free Housing Lease Addendum includes a number of provisions whereby referenced criminal activity based upon an arrest record or a preponderance of the evidence constitutes a violation of the lease and good cause for termination of the tenancy. Again, a conviction is a clearer way to proceed when it comes to terminating a lease and denying housing to an individual. Realtors and housing providers recognize the significance of the Illinois Human Rights Act and commit to upholding federal fair housing laws, as well as to offering equal professional service to all consumers in search of housing. We can lose our licenses to work in this industry if we do not. We are not saying that the City of DeKalb cannot have a Crime-Free Housing Lease Addendum. What we are saying is that the changes to the state statute of the Illinois Human Rights Act back in 2020 makes it much more difficult for us to deny housing to individuals based upon a unlawful criminal activity because it is now, because the arrest record is now considered a protected class. We believe Section 1, Section 7, and the Abatement Order are problematic as it relates to HUD's Desperate Impact Rule and Fair Housing. Strict adherence to the language will put a housing provider in the position of violating fair housing protections and civil rights for certain individuals in Illinois. Again, the Illinois Human Rights Act does not state that an arrest record can be treated as proof of engaging in unlawful criminal activity. Better clarity is added across the board if the lease terminations, evictions, implementation of any abatement orders, whatever you want to call them, are based upon a criminal conviction. We recognize that the city is confronting serious challenges, but we ask that you be mindful of the housing complexities and the ramifications of the policies that you enact as it relates to housing providers in your community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out tonight. All right, then we also have, Dwayne Brown, please. And again, Dwayne, I'll remind you, just three minutes, please.
Okay, Dwayne Brown, Fourth Ward. The Crime-Free Initiative, as the city calls it, would put more responsibility on the landlords who already face existing three-strike system. The Crime-Free Housing Ordinance is the most absurd ordinance ever approved by a DeKalb City Council. It places the police department's job on the landlords. More than 100 communities in Illinois have this type of ordinance, according to the Sergeant Shriver National Center on Poverty Law. These unfairly target low-income renters and discourage victims of domestic abuse from calling for help. They discriminate against racial minorities, female heads of households, disabled households, Section 8 renters, and could penalize tenants from calling 911. This can disproportionately harm groups that are protected by fair housing laws. This type of ordinance causes violations of tenants' and landlords' rights. Municipalities risk liability by having them, and they can affect the supply of rental property. Forced evictions without compensation violates constitutionally protected rights. Carl Leoni, when he was in charge, would scroll through the police reports, and when he spots a arrest, would send a report to the landlord. In 2016, his work contributed to 44 evictions. I'm asking the council not to approve this, discontinue the three-strike ordinance, and reject any such ordinances in the future. They are an unnecessary burden on landlords. There is a documented case in Minnesota of a tenant being unfairly evicted because her boyfriend caused disturbance on four occasions, the police were called, and because it was her apartment, and she did nothing wrong, was evicted, and her Section 8 revoked. I ask the council to not even consider this. This is an unnecessary burden and an unreasonable burden on the landlords. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. All right, Mr. David Jacobson. I have to remind, three minutes.
It'll be tough for some of us. Mayor, council. Again, in looking at some of the backup for this meeting, it brought up how long it took us to get here in this Crime-Free Landlord Ordinance. It was almost a two-year process. The biggest sticking point to most of the negotiations was the language that was used in the lease. Again, it was our intent as a council that several of you were on at that point to make sure that we were partnering with our landlords in town. And looking at these changes that are proposed tonight, it seems that there are all sticks and no carrots. Where is the council stepping up to support the landlords, providing programs such as a camera incentive program, a security incentive program, programs that will support the landlords in promoting their properties and making them safer for their tenants, rather than just criminalizing others' behavior and placing that burden on the landlords? I too am still a landlord in our community in the first, third, fifth and seventh, or first, fifth and seventh wards, and I individually have been dealing with issues, especially on the northwest side, of the neighborhood crime issues. I've brought these issues both to the mayor and the police chief and the alderman, pleading with them to try to make an impact on some of the criminal behavior that's going on there. Under these laws that are proposed, I would be responsible for that behavior, even as my police go typically unnoticed, even as I've heard things like, "We can't police our way out of the situation." Then why should the landlords landlord their way out of the situation? The police are responsible for the criminal aspects of breaking the law in this community. That's not the landlord's responsibility, that's not a business owner's responsibility, that's not anyone else's responsibility but the city. Imagine if the law said the City Council allowed crime and didn't prevent crime, and allowed it three times in the city, they'd all be removed for a year. That would be ludicrous. It's the same on landlords, in reality. Again, understanding that the landlords are between a rock and a hard place, they cannot evict merely because someone is charged with a crime. It's against Illinois state law. It is an expensive process, and it's a time-consuming one to go after evictions. It could take two years or more in some cases to get those tenants out of the properties. And looking at what these definitions are, the shells and the maize are very important here. Effectively, by not preventing crime, a landlord is responsible for violating these ordinances and is now responsible for a whopping fine. In reality, a fine that's more expensive than most of the criminal activity penalties that are occurring on the properties. I certainly appreciate that we do have some landlords in town that are likely harboring criminal activity.
Three minutes, please wrap up.
There are better ways to address it, and things we should be talking about, again, to promote the good landlords and punish the bad landlords. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. All right, and then I have Will Heinisch, please.
Good evening, Council. Will Heinisch, local businessman and property owner. I was on that task force 10 years ago that we did the three-strike rule, and it's amazing to me that I think we're all probably somewhat responsible and take some responsibility. That ordinance we wrote worked, and if you looked at crime within those first three, four, or five years, it went significantly down. But the city has changed, the crime has changed, and if you fail, doing the same old thing, eventually you're going to fail. So change, I believe, is needed. I think that a lot of effort went into that three-strike rule. This new policy, from what I've heard, is from other landlords, it doesn't provide due process, and that's kind of what the concern was in the three-strike rule. Some of the good things, though, in reading the considerations, some of the landlords are not aware of incidents. The way the old three-strike rule only reported tickable offenses. So if crime happened, it wasn't a tickable offense, the landlords weren't aware of that crime on their property. So I think there is some changes that need to be made. As a member of DARA, I know DARA's going to have a meeting later this week and talk this with their members to see what other input they have. Some other things that we need to probably put into this ordinance is we need to revisit this every two years and make changes, rather than do it, shelve it. I think the city holds some responsibility. I don't think if we, I read Chapter 52 again today, there's a lot of good stuff in there, and I don't think the city was fully enforced in the Crime-Free Housing Department, what was in that. So I think change is made. Let's not rush to a decision, and let's hear from all parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. And then the last one is Alstead Anderson, please. And again, I always have to say it, three minutes, that'd be great, thank you.
My name is Alstead Anderson, and I'm a tenant here in DeKalb, Illinois. So I have my own business here in Illinois. First of all, I think that the landlord should have some responsibility, because basically they have to run a credit check, a background check, and whoever they rent, they place to. I can have a felony, aggravated felony, or certain criminal background, and I would get denied for renting a property, right? But as soon as there is someone that don't have that background, commit a crime, then they don't want to be responsible for it. They should know what's going on in their property, I think. I think there's some changes need to make, you know, and also the city needs to have some kind of responsibility, you know, with the crime-free housing, you know? If you can not rent a person a home because of the criminal background, why wouldn't you have responsibility for when a person commit crime in your home? You should know what's going on in your home, you should know who you rent your home to, you know? You should do a thorough background check in that person, because if I don't have a good credit and I have any kind of criminal background, I would get, I would not get rented an apartment. You know, I would become homeless before I rented an apartment. So why wouldn't a landlord be responsible for who they rent in their home? You know, that's all I have to say right now.
Thanks, Alstead, appreciate you coming out tonight. All right, with that, City Manager, you want to tee this off?
Yes, I will. And I appreciate the folks that got up to speak earlier, and it's good to see Dwayne Brown back in the council meeting again. I am not going to spend a lot of time, because I know the council wants to dig into this, but I think it's important I spend some time, particularly since I'm the author, principal author, not the only author, of what you see tonight, and also because as the chief law enforcement official in the City of DeKalb, I'm accountable, and I feel that accountability every day. And one of the things I'm accountable for is assuring through our police chief and police department, through relations I have with many people, the landlords in this room, and I know most everybody who's sitting in the audience tonight, council and the mayor, of course, responsible for seeing that people are responsible in their own ways for their actions. And we have, for decades, been wrestling with how to make sure that apartments that are rented in our community, and there are some, I'm told on good authority, some 1,200 to 1,300 landlords in our community, many, many buildings, many more people leasing property, obviously, but to make sure that their properties are in good condition. So there's been a code enforcement piece to this. But in recent years, it's the whether or not lawful activity has been occurring at these units that has drawn most of the attention and is also... Oh. Good idea. So in 2013, I was also involved, I was representing NIU on the many discussions, and it did last about a year and a half to two years, that led to our Crime-Free Lease Addendum and the three-strike system that we have now. So let me just say what that is. The Crime-Free Lease Addendum, by the way, is not changed in what I have proposed, it's exactly the same document. As I reread it in recent months, I thought, wow, that was, for a 10-year-old document in government, that still stands up. It made the tenant accountable and responsible for keeping a lawful place, and it held the landlord responsible for making sure that the tenant did. That was basically it. Now, what was the three-strike system about? Well, that was when tenants were not held accountable. 30 years ago, the worst thing that you'd get from a tenant would be an open container standing in the front yard on a Friday night with some beer, and that was causing consternation in our police department. I was here, and because we were running calls Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, oh my. It's a lot worse now. Now we're responding on a nightly basis. I've got to pass along, you know, I've got to pass along from every shift. Much of this has to do with domestic battery, domestic disputes leading to battery, various kinds of battery, assault, aggravated assault. We have, unfortunately, many people who are leasing property whose way of reconciling differences is to get violent. Sometimes that starts with a verbal altercation, but it, more than ever, in my memory, it translates quickly into physical violence, of a nature that I'd rather not describe, on a regular basis. All 1,200 and 1,300 landlords abide this? Of course not. But we have a ready and consistent and continuing and growing number of incidents, such that when I present the first draft of the city's budget in about a month, you'll see a request to hire more police, not because, as somebody said earlier, we feel that all we need to do is hire more police and we solve the problem, because people are crying, literally, and asking for help every night, all night, into the wee hours of the morning, and all day. I've been to ward meetings in the last three months, every, almost every ward has gathered, and they're variously attended, not large numbers of people, some 20 or 30. And people are looking for traffic control, remember that? When people used to get pulled over for speeding and doing wheelies and doing all that stuff that puts other motorists at risk? We don't have the staffing power or the time at certain hours of every day of the week to do that, which is also our duty. So something has to be done, and I think it didn't take this for us to be aroused. On a weekly basis, the mayor and I and you get calls from people saying, "I think I heard shots fired." Do you remember that happening five years ago? A lot? Maybe you think you heard something, or somebody said they think they heard something. So that's very alarming. And then on August 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, juveniles, who have much more access to guns than ever before, juveniles were involved and were shot. First, it was somebody who gets shot in the back with a sawed-off shotgun, that was on Monday, a 15-year-old, I believe it was. Then it was a young lady who got shot in the butt on Tuesday. Then it was a teenager who got shot in the face from two feet away and killed instantly. That's why we're here tonight. So let me tell you what we're proposing. Tenants are still responsible, according to the Crime-Free Lease. And I do recommend that people in the audience, and anybody who's looking in tonight, anybody who wants to engage in this conversation, actually do the homework. It's not a lot of background for you tonight, but it is a couple pages. And what's proposed in the way of new regulations is not that much either. In fact, it's highlighted in yellow in the background, which anybody who's got a computer, you can just look up, you know, City Hall, municipal building, and municipal meetings, and get eventually to the meeting. and get eventually to the meeting tonight, and you can pull it up or print it off. Nothing else in this has changed. There were three pillars to what we came up with in 2013, and the one that has both the soft and the hard in it is the landlord-tenant regulations in chapter 10. And what I propose to do, and I'll get into what specifically that is, is to put in one place, one-stop shopping here, the key regulations that are in play if we're looking to enforce safety, security, civility in our leased space. That includes the crime-free lease. It's in here. It was in another chapter. So what's being proposed? The three-strike rule, the idea was to engage very quickly, and I think this is still the case, with the landlord or designated, it could be a management firm, responsible for seeing to the security of the people in the building that he or she or that company owned or leased, when unlawful activity took place. So there would often be a phone conference to start. And if, say, the landlord was out of town, didn't know anything about it, is just as alarmed as a police officer making the call and says, look, we're going to do better. What do you propose? Let's work together on this. Then it was noted that there were mitigating circumstances. And then a second time, it might be the case that something happened at the same unit, same landlord, same management company. Again, a conversation, oh, I'm going to take, I'm going to start proceedings against this tenant. It's just not working out. They're in violation of the crime-free lease. The crime-free lease, by the way, has some interesting language in it. Here's an excerpt. "A tenant shall not be retaliated against nor evicted when merely a victim of unlawful activity." Very important to note. And then it goes on. "But the tenants shall be strictly and vicariously liable and responsible," meaning might not even be there, "for the unlawful activity of the tenant's guests, any member of the tenant's household, and any person under the tenant's control." That's been the law for 10 years. We're not changing it. You're responsible when you come into DeKalb, and you're going to live in our rental properties. All right? So the old system, we just go on, there'd be a second time, maybe a second conference, same story, and then a third, and oftentimes it went to a fourth and fifth. If there was no cooperation, then it got tougher. And when you got to the third time, then you were given the notice that you might be running a disorderly house, and then it had to go to the hearing officer, and the hearing officer would hear it, the city being the prosecution, if you will, the landlord or tenant, if there was a contest, being the defendant. The hearing officer would decide on the merits of the data and evidence that was presented, and would say, no, you're guilty, and the fine is maybe up to $1,500. That was not enforced. The hearing officer doesn't enforce that. And if it was to be enforced because the landlord said, well, I'm not going to pay that, I don't agree, then you have to go to circuit court and start over again. And that might take another six months. Witness our experience with a certain landlord for the last three years who owned a lot of rental property, used to be about 1,000 units, now it's about 500. We are, this gentleman spent much of his time in the last three years in that courtroom and before the hearing officer. Okay, so what are we proposing? I'll cut to the quick. We're proposing a system which has tough consequences, but the same due process. And I'm pleased to say, and I'll show some contrition here, in thinking this through, you know, going from A to Z, in my first draft, I think I omitted some important due process steps. And with the help of landlords who are most interested in this and leadership of DARA, they weren't officially meeting with me, but we did a lot of back and forth, I learned from those omissions, and I think we've covered that, and there may be more. And we'll have some more discussions with the DARA membership on Thursday evening. And I welcome all members listening or who have an opportunity to pick up these regulations. So what are we going to do? Once again, we're looking to determine whether there is a criminal aspect to the property where the nuisances were found. And the nuisances can include, by definition, unlawful activity. And if the authorities, in this case, some kind of a champion working for the city, by the way, I want to make this very clear, Carl Leone's been a part-time employee, he is retiring, and we wish him well. He was retiring before I put pen to paper, and I have worked with him over the years, some 30 years, and I'm very pleased that he's going to have an opportunity to do some things that he likes to do. So what we'll be doing is looking for somebody to do this full-time, who will pursue this hand-in-glove with landlords who are willing to help and to work with us, and those that aren't, will identify what the issues are, and they'll go to another authority. So if nuisances are presumed, once again, the meeting, the mandatory meeting with somebody representing the property. If it's found that there is neglect or in some way some culpability, then a very stiff fine, $5,000 the first time. So if it's $800 roughly to lease that unit a month, and it's about $10,000 a year, that's half of that year's revenue. That's an eye-opener. I realize how tough that is. That's purposeful. Is there room for remedy? Of course. Things can be done. And if, for instance, the landlord was in the process of an eviction proceeding, that order would be stayed until the result of that, and that would usually offset the first strike, if you will, the cost of that first offense, if that was in process. And the same for any future. But even the best steward of a unit, if there is a pattern that develops there, and what we're saying is a pattern, it's not going to be three or four or five or six offenses, but if it's two, then it's a stiffer penalty. And the third time, including possibly some kind of restitution, whether it's a combination of the tenant or the landlord. And the third time is the closing of the unit, which can be done under state statute, for a year. So there could be as much as basically two years' worth of rent lost for the egregious disregard and negligence on the part of whoever owns or manages the property. And we can, and one of those nuisance violations would be a failure to import the crime-free lease addendum into your lease. It's been the law of the city for 10 years, as I said, that that has to be, at least an addendum, if not embedded into the text of every lease. But for those who haven't, if in the process of investigating something else, we find out that's the case, that's $1,000. So if we work together to create the law, and we're not abiding by it, then either we go back to abiding by it, or we do something better with the crime-free lease. And if what's, as Mr. Heinisch said earlier, if what we've been doing isn't making a difference, if the unlawful activity, I'm not talking about unlawful activity at a commercial retailer on Sycamore Road. I'm talking about where people put their heads in beds, where people next door have the right to feel safe. And if there's a coming and going of bad actors, we have to get after it. And that's what this is intended to do, to either mandate or compel or hopefully just request the cooperation of those who own the property where the unlawful activity took place. That's what this is.
Thanks, city manager. I just wanted to, yeah, so I just wanted to kind of kick things off here. You know, for me, this has been an issue since day one, when I came into office, and I love that council, you know, the night I was sworn in. We purchased, initiated the purchase of a particular property, and we tore it down. And now it's a grass field, and it was a problematic property. And we've been doing a lot in the process since then to address the issue that we have in our community of shots fired, the issues that we have of crime. And yet, we still are faced with, on a regular basis, the raves come out, and it's continued shots fired, it's continued crime. This council has been very active, working with various landlords. Bill and I both have asked to come to the DeKalb Area Runners Association meetings to be a participant in it. We've had leadership, we've had other landlords that have come, been a part of this whole process, trying to figure out what are we going to do? Because I recognize a lot of landlords in here, and I know a lot of landlords here, this is a zero event for you. You run great properties. You do everything you can to make sure that the tenants that you rent to can come home at night, like Bill said, and lay their head down on a pillow and feel safe, that their kids, when they come home from school and walk through that front door and come into the building, are safe, that it's a clean environment, that it's a place that you can actually raise a family. Or you can come home after a stressful, long day and enjoy your family's company, or if you're just single, enjoy yourself, watch TV, decompress, have friends over, or whatever. But there's another set of landlords in this community that do not operate that way, do not behave that way, and continue to cause problems in our community that force people to live in squalor and force them to be in an environment where when their little kids come home from school, their lives are actually in jeopardy. And it was a 17-year-old that was shot in the face and killed right here on Ridge Drive, right? So where we're coming from, we're working with the landlords, because the last thing we want to do is all the, and we have so many great landlords in our community, the last thing we want to do is cause undue hardship, any harm whatsoever on people that are conducting themselves and running their properties in such a great way. And we've heard from them, and Bill mentioned, we've gone through the due process place and portion, and we really want to make sure that if something happened, that there is an opportunity for a good landlord to advocate for themselves, and you know what? You're right, you're doing everything awesome, fantastic. But the bad landlords, right? We need to go after them at a level we've never gone after them before. I mean, I want to go after the jugular of bad landlords in our community. I'm tired of it, I know city council's tired of it, and I hear from our residents all the time. We are sick of what's happening out there. So I wanted to see firsthand, we can all sit here and talk, and we can say what we think is right and what is wrong, but as, if you go out into the field, if you go out at night and you see firsthand why we have this particular ordinance before us right now under consideration. I just did a police ride-along three weeks ago from 8:00 PM to 3:00 AM in the morning, right? I was in places where we're standing in a hallway, and the officer's like, we have to keep moving. I'm like, why? And he's like, bugs. He's like, look down. I have a video of cockroaches and bugs crawling around on the floor, right in the hallway, and the officer wants to keep moving because he doesn't want them on him, right? People live in those apartments. I'm just in the hallway. I can't even imagine what it's like in the individual units themselves, right? That's going on. Cameras that have been removed, spray painted over, doors that are unsecure, the security locks are just absolutely busted off of them, fire panels going off, the fire trucks were out there at 2:00 AM in a very volatile situation where a half hour later, shots were fired in that same unit that fire trucks were out. Our firefighters are trying to save people's lives by making sure that they live in a safe environment if there's fires going on. And here, they have to come in an environment where there's quite a high probability that they could be in an incident where someone's actually shooting off a handgun. This same parking lot that I'm in, right? We were there earlier that night and issued a citation for someone hanging out in the parking lot, playing loud music, causing disruption, issued him a citation. That same person and some of the people around them were also downtown DeKalb, instigating and causing a fight downtown DeKalb. Then 2:00 in the morning, we're back at that same property, dealing with that same individual and those individuals, right? That individual, we have rested before for a gun in his car, that same individual has had shots fired here in the community and served time for it, and now is back in that particular property, causing problems, and potentially could be a powder keg for future violence in our community. Yet, they still are here in our community. The crime-free housing piece that we're bringing forth, we've had on the books since 2013. Carl's done a great job, it's a part-time job, and the city is culpable, someone mentioned that. We have some culpability here, too. So we're going to dial up our game. The director of crime-free housing, full-time position, reports directly to the city manager is our goal. We're still in consideration here, and I'm sorry, council, if I'm ranting a little bit. We're going to have plenty of time to discuss this, and nothing is set in stone. But the goal is, it's a direct report to the city manager, and I'm in the city hall every single solitary day. This person will be in the office, if we approve it, this person will be in the office next to the city manager. I will pass them every single solitary day and ask for a status. Because if you're a resident of our city, there is no reason in the world you should have an infestation in your apartment, you should have shots fired, you should feel threatened. Because you cannot raise a family, you cannot take care of your kids, and you cannot have a life that I think every resident of DeKalb deserves. And it further goes on, at another call, broad daylight, US Marshals in our town, tracking down a fugitive across state lines who was hanging out in his sister's apartment, wanted for attempted murder. And this lasted an entire day, all of our resources taken up by it, while he's splashing gang signs on the roof in front of a photographer, and mom is out there laughing during the whole time. This is happening in the city of DeKalb right now. So it's important, the last thing I want to do is talk about the issues that we're having in our community, because we all know that live here, 90% of our community is probably one of the most wonderful towns to live in, one of the most caring. We have all the social services to take care of each other. We really have each other's backs, and it's a community that I raised my family in, have my business in, and it's a community I'll never leave, and it's a community I am incredibly proud of. But I'm sick and tired of getting the texts every single weekend, I'm sick and tired of students that come to Northern Illinois University and attend class that could potentially be subject to harm because we have a handful of landlords out there that aren't doing their job. Their ethics are out the window, their morals are out the window. And you know what? We had crime-free housing on the books, and it hasn't worked so far, so we're going to dial up our game. We're going to work with all the good landlords to make sure that, again, we have a minimal impact on you. But again, if you're a bad landlord, your days are numbered in this community, period, as far as I'm concerned. So city council, questions or comments? All of the women, Larson.
Just a couple of things to add to the mayor's. We signed some videos, some police cams, and, you know, you hear shots fired, 5, 10, 61 shots fired at one incident, bullet holes in kids' bedroom walls. This is beyond just, I don't know, when I was a kid, just crazy, this is life-threatening, and we wonder why we have problems in our schools. These kids are living in war zone in some of our wards. Bullets are coming through their walls at night. Why the hell should they give a darn of what's going on in school? They can't sleep, and what they're learning is the way to deal with any problems, a gun, that's what you do. And so we all have to step up to the plate. And I know landlords are going to be like, I don't know, but we're trying, my God, the police, I've done on the midnight runs, scared the hell out of me. I don't know how these people suit up every day. We have a police force that's second to none for their commitment to this community. And so we all have to step up to the plate. The council's doing all we can with the money we have to have more SROs in the school to protect our police. We're trying to come up with laws that we can enforce, but, you know, it didn't, took a long time to get where we're at, and it's not going to fix overnight, but we got to do something. We got to get a safe environment for people to live here. And that's it, we just have to.
Agreed. Council? Hearing non, oh, chief, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I think I lost it. I feel obligated to give the perspective from the police department. So I think people are missing one point. This is a public safety issue, public safety. And in order to combat public safety, every stakeholder has to do their part. So when people, and you'll hear me say it, and I've said it before, we won't police ourselves out of it. We've tried this over and over again. We're not the only city that's dealing with crime like this. We can make numerous arrests every night, and somebody's going to take that person's place. That's all there is to it, until we make it so uncomfortable that they don't want to be here in the first place. So we have to get down into the crust of the matter, the deep-rooted issue for crime. So when we say that all stakeholders, and that means everyone, that's why we have neighborhood watch programs, because law enforcement cannot be everywhere. We cannot be at every street corner, it's impossible. And every police department is dealing with the same problem. So we depend on our citizens, we depend on our landlords to be extension of the police. So when we ask for assistance, that's what we're asking for. We always say, if you see something, say something. That helps. That helps us. So when I say it's a public safety issue, everyone has a burden to carry as far as public safety. So if you see a crime and you call us, we respond, we take the subject in custody. We wouldn't have been able to do that if that, whoever that citizen was, didn't make the first call. That's an extension of the police, and it's all in regard to public safety. We all have to do our part. It's impossible for us to have a safe city if everyone isn't involved. So when someone says, "Well, that's the police responsibility," no, it isn't. We have our part of the pie, yes, and there's a big part of it that is ours. However, we need everyone to assist us to having a safe community. So when we talk about landlords, we had, just to give you an example, we had a young man who we considered pretty much public enemy number one for us, we had been chasing him for weeks. He was armed, he's an armed felon, he was on electronic monitoring, and every time our officers would get in foot pursuit with him, he would be able to enter some doors that should have been locked by whoever the management of this facility, and he was able to make access, and we were able, and he was able to avoid capture because of this situation where we didn't have, you know, as we talk about good landlords, we had landlords who weren't keeping the doors locked, and they were, you know, and this felon, who was a clear and present danger to the city of DeKalb, was able to avoid arrest numerous times from the DeKalb Police Department. Now luckily, one night, our officers were able to come up with a plan, and they were able to get him in custody. Like I said, this young man was already on electronic monitoring, he was out there committing crimes on a daily, nightly basis. So we have some very dangerous individuals in this town, and I'm just going to be completely transparent. There are weapons in this town that we have been trying to interdict, and we have taken a lot of them off the street. But this is a, this is not something that's going to end today. This is a continuous fight every day, and the DeKalb Police Department, every day, is just trying, we're trying to win the day. We're trying to win the day, and that means that no one gets hurt, no one gets injured in this city. And every day that happens, we take a win, we say we won the day. So, but we need the assistance of the public, of every stakeholder, not just landlords, though, our clergy, our schools, our retail owners. We need everyone to assist us in making this community safe. Because I will, like I said, we take responsibility of the biggest piece of the pie. However, we can only do so much, because we can only be at so many places, at so many times, we're dealing with pop-up parties, 200, 300 people at these parties. We have to sit there and pretty much navigate that on, from Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. We have most of our officers dealing with that. The other night, we had shots fired at a party with 200, 300 people. We were lucky that no one got injured out of that. So we're doing everything we possibly can to mitigate and interdict crime, but for anyone to say that it's not my responsibility, or I don't have any stake in this, you're wrong. Every person in this city is a stakeholder, and they have responsibility to make sure that the city of DeKalb is a safe place. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to give you a round of applause on that, chief. And that's what this is about. There are a bunch of levers we need to be pulling as a community to effect change, right? This is one of them. We do not see this as the end-all, be-all, right? But this is one more thing that we, as a city, as a community, can do to try and address the issue we have. But the chief's right, we need individuals seeing something, saying something, we need landlords involved, we need neighborhoods involved, we need the police involved, council involved, all of us need to be involved to fix this. Again, this is just one thing that we're going to do towards the step of creating a safe community for every DeKalb resident in the city of DeKalb. Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, there were, chief, there were a couple of questions from Ward 6 residents asking about gang affiliation. That's not something that we really discussed here much at council, but how much is attributable to gangs, and certainly, what can council do, what can the public do to alleviate that issue?
So when we talk about gangs, and I've had this conversation before, the one thing I will tell you is that we don't have a gang war here in DeKalb. Because if we did, we would have retaliation back and forth, we would have, I mean, believe me, this situation would be 100 times worse. So that's something we do not have. One of the things we do not have, we don't have carjackings. That has been prevalent all through Cook County, DuPage County, up into Will County, but it has not affected DeKalb County as a whole. So there are a couple of things that we really haven't been impacted by. Now, is there a nexus to gangs? Sure, there's always some nexus to some of the crimes other than domestic-related. So, you know, could we have an offender who is actually a member of a gang who is committing a crime of opportunity? Yes. But as far as having an actual gang war, we do not have that in town. Now, I know Alderman Larson spoke about the shooting. Now, that one could have been, definitely could have been gang-related, and there's possibility of strong gang nexus to that situation, but that was that one situation. But we're not dealing with an overall gang violence situation, because we don't have the retaliation that would come with gang wars. City of Chicago deal with that, they have those all the time, and I would tell you that the number of shootings in the city of Chicago, when you're in the middle of a gang war, is unbelievable. And there's a lot of, lot of carnage when it comes to a gang war. We do not have that. And at the end of the day, so, when I speak about gangs, there's always a nexus. They're always going to be around here. We live too close to a major metropolitan city who has an unbelievable gang problem, so of course we're going to have spillover. But I will say, those are the two of the things that you do see a lot when you have major gang problems, is the carjackings, and you will see those gang retaliations, which we have not seen, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Alderman Faver.
Yeah, I just want to thank Bill for putting this together, and for the folks from Dara, the landlords to come out. I think that's how we're going to reach the most effective solution, right? Is getting input from the landlord stakeholders. You know, I don't want to penalize anyone's business, but certainly, we do need to, we need to make some changes, and Will, I think, had mentioned, right? The city hasn't necessarily fully maybe upheld our part of the bargain. We're looking to make that change, we're going to make that change and put in place what needs to be done. And I would ask for the input from our group and landlords, just give us your recommendations. How can we solve this problem with your help? That's what we want to do.
Council, oh, city attorney?
Yep, my apologies, I just wanted to briefly identify three points that were highlighted that may address some of the concerns that have been raised here. First, is that the draft ordinance has an affirmative defense for landlords, that if they are exercising reasonable care to prevent unlawful activity on the premises, that is an absolute defense to the violation. So it goes to our point that if you have a good landlord that is doing everything they can, but, you know, something happens through no fault of their own, that's an absolute defense that they can bring, and they can raise. And that very, everything that they're doing beforehand, that can be discussed with the new crime-free housing director.
Correct.
Before any type of violation is even considered to be brought in the first place. So that should alleviate a lot of concerns, I think, that were raised. The second word to address, there's some comments about the Illinois Human Rights Act, and whether the prohibition of arrest records for real estate transactions would be unlawful, whether this proposed draft ordinance would violate that prohibition. What was not mentioned is that when those amendments were passed in 2020, the state legislature also passed an amendment to the Illinois Human Rights Act that expressly exempted arrest records being a basis for crime-free housing. That's why you see everywhere throughout Illinois, there are two ways that can trigger a crime-free housing. One could be an arrest record, like that's proposed here, and that had been previously proposed, and the other way is a conviction. That's a policy choice, both are legal for you to be made. One is not illegal. You know, they're both legal, the Illinois General Assembly expressly passed an amendment to allow for an arrest record to be a trigger for crime-free housing. Now, an arrest record can also, if you, considering that, can be a violation for other purposes, which are not relevant to our discussion here today, but very relevant for landlords to think about in how they run their business, so don't want to talk about it. The third thing to mention and to point out, and is in the agenda, is what, under Illinois law, we cannot consider as unlawful activities. So one of the concerns of crime-free housing is that if there's a, is that it unfairly penalizes people who are victims of domestic violence, or any type of sexual violence, or in response to a disability call, all that has been accepted. There's nothing we can do about that. Under Illinois law, it's been passed and preempted, home rule authority, as to whether that can be considered to be a triggering event for crime-free housing, it cannot be, and we expressly include that in the draft ordinance.
Thank you, city attorney. Yes, city manager.
And find it reasonable, and hopefully the legislature will understand the difference between the victim and the perpetrator, because as I said earlier, so much of our initial responses are around the topic of domestic violence.
Any other comments, questions, council? Alderman Smith.
Couple things. I'm hearing that maybe, and Will, thanks for this, that as far as, Alderman Faver, that the city's not upholding our end. I think with the change in crime-free housing, we'll be more involved, I guess, if you will, with our good landlords. Who, someone who has worked with landlords on the law enforcement side, I will guarantee, I've been to several doors with several landlords over the years, and it's been very effective. But we need to also give them tools to help through this. Something the chief forgot to mention, chief, and I know this is on your plate, is January 1st, 2023, is right around the corner, we're going to have the Bail Reform Act. The tool that would allow the police to put someone in jail and hopefully decompress is going away, and that's going to, I think, aggravate all of our, everybody sitting here is going to have aggravation over this. I think the chief would back me on this 100%. So I think we need to take the stand on this and move forward, and try and address the issues with the bad landlords. I see a lot of them here that, you know, I've been around with all the years, and that's...
A lot of good landlords here.
A lot of great landlords, yeah. I know, sorry if that came out wrong, guys. I mean, I see Jim there, and I see Mr. Carlson, and, you know, we're after the bad landlords, guys. We just need your help to get there, otherwise, this is going to go south even farther. So I'm going to be quiet and let the mayor speak a little more, I think, is what he's going to do.
I think I've said enough. Alderman McAdams, you want to say anything, or you're good?
I've just been listening.
Okay, fantastic.
Well, and I do want to say that it's important that we, it's important that we address the issue of accountability. I mean, we all understand that we want to live here in a safe community, and we absolutely have to address that. So let's all work together to draft a good resolution and try and do better.
So city manager, oh, Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, and how can we be more proactive, especially with Dara's help? Again, chief, you mentioned it, this will take a community, so rather than have to employ these reactive measures, what are those things we can do to be more proactive? That can include, again, discussions with our governing partners, school district, regional office of education, county board, we need to be all in on this, or we will not be successful.
Any other comments or questions? All right, the city manager's looking for a little direction. My recommendation is we have them proceed forward and move this from draft into a final ordinance that comes before council at our next meeting for first reading. Is that agreeable to the city council?
Yes.
Okay. City manager?
In the meantime, we'll be listening, we'll be attending a meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And then anybody else who, in the next couple of weeks, has something they want to bring forward, but I'll follow your direction and bring back an ordinance which you could take on several readings.
Okay, thank you. Did you have something, Alderman Smith, or was that all you wanted?
Yeah, I guess where I'm going is maybe through Dara that we'll get, what can we do to help the landlords? Does that make sense? I mean, if there's something we're missing, I think, you know, what can we do to help? I think that that's kind of what we're asking for. I may be wrong, but that's what I'm asking.
No, and in the meeting, so you know, city manager, Nicholas and myself are asking just that as well. Even beyond this, what are some things that we can do to be a better partner with the landlords in our community, so they can be successful by having a safe environment? Alderman Larson.
And just one of the people that stood up, did bring up something that maybe the city can think about, is some kind of a program that would help landlords make their properties safer with cameras or something, some kind of fiscal help for you guys to make your properties easier to maintain and have the right kind of people living there. So I would suggest that maybe in the discussions, we do that.
Alderman McAdams?
I did want to mention that in the preliminary discussions of this, there was some discussion about a social services role, and drawing up a plan for social service groups to get involved when this happens, so that there's somebody, maybe from a social service background, who can step in and speak with the people and try and coordinate that.
So, you know, we do have two social workers working for the police department right now.
Correct.
And it'd be nice to have a third, but couldn't afford it this coming year. But two, and that's exactly what they do, and they get referrals from our police, they get referrals. People are, not everybody in the heat of exchange, particularly if it's domestic, is of a mind, thinking clearly to know how that might help them, but, you know, that information's passed along religiously, so that maybe a day or two later, they see some value, and there is follow-up. And our social workers follow up as well. Don't want to interfere, but something happened last couple nights, can I, you know? So, and they've frankly built quite a caseload, so.
So you have what you need, city manager?
I do, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on, but before I do, I just wanted to thank everyone that came out tonight. I know there's a lot of landlords in the audience. If you are a member of Dara, I would highly recommend, if you have some more questions or comments, please feed them through Dara Leadership. Bill and I will be at the meeting on Thursday, so we'll be hearing those. This is always a work in progress. We want to make sure, again, I think most realize how business-friendly this council is, and that applies to landlords as well. But also, there's a zero tolerance for behavior that doesn't belong in our community, and that's what we're trying to address. So thanks for coming out. We are not offended if you get up and leave at this point. I don't expect you to stick through the rest of the council agenda, because some of it might be a little snooze-fest for you. So again, thanks for coming out, express it through Dara Leadership, reach out to us directly if you have any questions, great to meet you, thank you, and have a wonderful, wonderful night.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item K, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2022-088, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive for 248 East Lincoln Highway, in the amount of $1,388.30 for Chilton Sporting Goods. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager?
The Chiltons have undergone some emergency roof repairs. This is considered deferred maintenance, is eligible for the lowest threshold of grant support, which is 10%. Presented some background to you, the estimated cost of the repair, they have a flat roof, so it's a hot-process method, and it was, it's the cost just under $14,000, and that means the AIP portion would be just under $1,400. That's what's before you, we recommend it.
Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Faver?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-088 passes. Moving on to number two, Resolution 2022-089, approving a bar liquor license for the Grove Tavern LLC, 204 North First Street. Can I have, Fourth Street, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. The new establishment, Grove Tavern, is going to be planting itself at Agora Tower, and this is, they have met our requirements. There, of course, is a state liquor license, but by granting this local license... There, of course, is a state liquor license, but by granting this local license, they can proceed with their application at the state level. They've also requested the issuance of a live entertainment permit, which is part of the attached resolution. We recommend your support.
Is there anyone here from the Grove Tavern?
Yes.
Just wanted to call you all out. Thanks for coming out, yeah.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, counsel? Really excited to have you all, another option to go out. I'm a big believer in having cool and fun things to do in the community, and I can't wait to see what you create and come out and be a patron of yours, so. Yes, Alderman Smith?
My usual question, when are you going to open?
Yeah.
As an investor, as soon as possible.
Early December, we're open.
Oh, awesome, that's great.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And there'll be outdoor seating, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
I need you to be there.
Yeah, really excited.
No.
All right, any other comments or questions, counsel? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-089 passes. Good luck, gentlemen, and thanks. And just like everyone else, you don't have to stay, you can leave. Thanks for coming out tonight. All right, moving on to number three, Resolution 2022-090, authorizing a professional services agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick Incorporated for design engineering professional services for the reconstruction of Lucinda Avenue in an amount not to exceed $400,230. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favors. City Manager?
Thank you. This reconstruction resurfacing project is overdue. The last one was done late 80s. I was around for that one. I'm here for this one, I won't be around for the next one, so. But we're going to do this right, we are eligible for surface transportation urban, which is, the acronym is STU funds, which pass through the IDOT offices as projects qualify. This is one. It's going to take some considerable design work, and what we propose is the engineering design be done by Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick. The total amount is $400,230, that's a not-to-exceed number. We recommend your support. The funding for that comes from the MFT Fund.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-0...
May I say just one thing? The last one was a statewide winner of the best project of the year, and I, no, no pressure or anything, Zach. Something to look forward to.
Why wouldn't there be pressure? I mean, if we won that before, that's the bar, so.
That's true.
And is there going to be another roundabout? Did I read that?
That's to be determined.
To be determined, yes. Yeah. No, I'm really looking forward to hearing your comments on that, but I got a few of my own.
I was just reading through the background, I'm like, a roundabout.
Yep. So, Resolution 2022-090 passes. All right, moving on to number four, Resolution 2022-091, authorizing the award of a contract to Elliott and Wood Incorporated in the amount of $202,053.64 for the construction of traffic calming measures on Fairview Drive and a bike path extension near Grove Street, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $225,000. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager? And we do have comments from Alderman Perkins, once you're done, City Manager, that I'll read for the record.
Okay, good, yeah. And much interest to residents in the Fourth Ward, the one piece of it, which is the traffic calming on Fairview Drive, and then the other half, as the title said, was the bike path extension, which you see a little bit of, it's already striped from Fourth to Second, but then now it has to be extended over to First Street, and there's a little overland stuff to be done, and some issues with the parking lot, but we're going to get that done. I congratulate Zach for, we're trying to get things done this fall. This has been, if you haven't noticed, this has been a very busy year. A lot of construction, a lot of public improvements and public infrastructure, and it's important that both of these get done. We had some bidders. Elliott and Wood was the low bidder for the combined projects and bid a price not to exceed $225,000, or actually, $212,053.64, and what we've asked for is some room for change orders up to a not-to-exceed price of $225,000. Recommend your support.
And Alderman Perkins's comments were, "Good evening. As I am unable to join you this evening, I would like to share my thoughts. First, thanks to Zach and city staff for developing this excellent option. Second, I wholeheartedly support tonight's consideration for Fairview traffic consideration, and implore an approval on first and second reading. We need to get something done before the snow flies. As our economy has continued to grow and flourish on the south side of DeKalb, the single largest feedback item in the Fourth Ward has been control of traffic speed and volume. It has been the subject of multiple emails, telephone conversations, and meetings. There is consensus among the Fourth Ward. Something needs to be done. Traffic management along Fairview has been an issue quite literally for decades. While many alternatives have been considered, this blend of traffic calming lane reconfiguration, stop signage, and pedestrian island are a great start. Additional policing has also been suggested as an option. In my opinion, brick and mortar is a more sustainable use of our resources. Today, we need our police in other areas of the community. Best regards, Greg Perkins, Fourth Ward Alderman." Any other comments or questions? Wonderful. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-091 passes. We're expecting some sort of award, at least on this one, the City Engineers Act. All right, number five, Resolution 2022-092, authorizing the award of a contract to Alliance Contractors in the amount of $53,512.50 for the construction of a sidewalk extension along Annie Glidden Road, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $60,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is truly a promise kept, and Andy, I don't know if we still have that banner, but if we do, we might dust it off and throw it up for this one. It's not a real expensive project, but it's a vital link between Twombly and the controlled intersection at Dresser and Annie Glidden. This will provide a safe passage for particularly schoolchildren who are going to and from the high school, or to other purposes, maybe off the road to church eventually, or into the kind of facilities. So, the project went out for bid, the low bidder was Alliance Contractors. We've worked with them, a good company, does good concrete work. Their bid was $53,512.50, and we're going to throw in a little bit extra for those things that, this is an interesting pathway. There's a lot of tree work that has to be done there, and some other things, so. A not-to-exceed price of $60,000, and we support this project.
Counsel? Alderman Smith?
Zach, this is one we were talking about, where the trees will get trimmed back, or maybe it was Andy I was talking to. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of trees and vegetation right there. Yeah, I'm excited about this project, to get all those kids to be able to walk safely to school across Dresser at the stoplight there. That's just fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-092 passes. Number six, Resolution 2022-093, authorizing the award of a contract to Alliance Contractors in the amount of $202,138.70 for the construction of segmentation measures along Edgbrook Drive, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $222,000. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Segmentation, by the way, that's an engineering term for throwing things around a little bit. I don't know what that is. So, the, this is a project that has been in the talking phase for a year and a half or so. City officials, the mayor, has been involved in working with NIU officials, the Greek community, to talk about ways to calm traffic there, to cut down on the raceway between Black Hawk and Normal, both on Kimberly and on Edgbrook. This has to do with the Edgbrook portion, we're just not, we're going to run out of good weather and time this fall to do Kimberly as well, but the design was hastened forward by Zach Gill, and what you see in your background, which members of the audience probably don't have the benefit of, is how we're going to create, basically in the middle, a lot of green space, which is more or less parallel with where 912 Edgbrook used to be, and in your graphic, you can see the building's still in that old aerial, and that we used to own and tore down. So, there are a couple of bidders on this. The low bid came again from Alliance Contractors. Their bid was $202,138.70. We're looking for an allowance to bring that up to a not-to-exceed even number of $222,000. This would be funded by the ARBA Fund, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, Fund 110. It's appropriate, it's in the qualified census tract.
Hearing none, awesome. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-093 passes. This is going to be an exciting one. I really can't wait to see the final project, product. All right, number seven, Resolution 2022-094, authorizing Standard Equipment Company to repair and refurbish a 2005 Elgin Pelican Street sweeper in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favors, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager?
Mayor, I thought you, I'm sorry, Gabe, because I thought you were talking about this Pelican Street sweeper, which I know, it's very important.
No, I'm sorry. I thought the hammerheads on a...
It is exciting, though. So, and it's very important.
Actually, sorry, Andy knows how I feel about street sweeping, so.
Yes, exactly.
I'm really excited about this one.
Okay. So, we've got an oldie but a goodie still, in a lot of ways, and these items are pretty expensive new. We didn't have the means to hire a new, hire, buy a new Pelican sweeper. Pelicans, one of the most solid, it may not be the Cadillac, but it's one of the most solid and widely sold sweepers, and because of that, then the parts would be easy to obtain over time. It's certainly adorable unit, and we found a way to repair it for about $100,000. That's still pricey, but it would work out and would buy us about five years, five or six years. We talked about this when the Finance Advisory Committee met with the council, and we talked about this being funded by Fund 420, the capital projects fund, so we're proposing to go forward with that and to proceed as fast as we can, so it's in our hands again, when we can do the streets after the snow.
Counsel? Yes, Alderman Favors.
So, you sort of answered my question, because I wasn't at the first FAC meeting. But my question, when I just roughly did the math, I don't know what we've paid in maintenance over the years, but it seems like if we can buy a new one for $266, and it's going to last 20 years, it's a good deal, but is that, so are we going to add, in three to five years, is this going to be in our capital funding plan?
Yeah, that's, it was a tough conversation, more at the staff level. We fleshed it out a little bit, brought it before the joint committee and council meeting, but frankly, we don't have the revenue coming into that fund, and we had, we've been setting aside for, we knew something had to be done, and we've been setting a little bit aside, so we could have maybe pushed this, squeezed this forward about a year ago, but then it would have been at the expense of something else. We're trying to do four squads, police squads, some other things. There are two projects as part of 420 for Public Works, and other things, so this is about all we had. This tapped, looking to carry it, wouldn't you say? Yeah. There's, what do they do on the basketball court? There's none of that, it's more like this. So, that's, I see your point, we all see your point, and it's close, and it's in that range where you got to start thinking, well, maybe we ought to just do that, but they are durable, and they might exceed our expectations for the durability, that's all.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-094 passes. All right, number eight, Resolution 2022-095, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding in an agreement with Lane Christensen Company for repair and replacement of well parts and equipment in an amount not to exceed $61,105. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favors. City Manager?
In late July, we came to you and said we have a problem. We had planned during this budget year to do repairs to our well number 14, but the fact is that the well, the parts just didn't, the pump and other parts just didn't last long enough for us, so we had to do an emergency repair, brought in a company that has, is very familiar with the kind of pumps that we use, and one of the sole source providers in Illinois for those pieces, and did a very good job for us, and I want to congratulate Brian Favors, because we had a budget, and he's very good at budgeting pretty tightly, but with the management of this repair and working with the contractor on the site, we are actually, even with this proposed replacement, going to be about $45,000 under what we had budgeted for the year. And so, what is before you tonight? We need to have some parts to replace during those emergencies, that's what we, we have one on the shelf, so to speak. We don't have everything on the shelf, but having that spare pump makes a lot of sense, and we can jump on the repair, because these wells, our deep wells, really need to be pumping these days, it's a steady thing, so we hope you'll support this.
Counsel? Hearing no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-095 passes. All right, moving on to Agenda Item L, ordinances. Number one, Ordnance 2022-028, revoking ordinance 2012-070, providing a special-use permit for a vehicle salvage yard located at 1008 Oak Street. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And the owner is here tonight and may have some things to say to the council. But just, here's where we are. Ninety days ago, in late June, there was a council meeting, and we presented a case for the revocation of the special use permit, which would allow the salvage to continue at 1008 Oak Street. And this is mostly vehicles that are going to be salvaged for the metal. And at that time, there was a lot of back and forth. The 90-day grace period was given with the understanding that the yard would essentially be cleaned up, and then the sword, if you will, would be removed from over that. I have it on the authority of the Building Department just as recently as this morning. There was work, some work done over the weekend, some substantial work, but not much had been done leading up to that. And we're still short, I believe, there might be 100 cars or, what would you say? Maybe, maybe something like that, that need to be crushed and compacted. So I bring this back because that was what the council set up. We had some photos in your background. That was, they were taken on Thursday, and there are some more photos which you're seeing. This was from today?
This morning.
This morning, and maybe some more work was done this afternoon, but there's still a fair amount there. And the question is, should we proceed to second reading, or is there some other path that you would like to follow at this point?
So confused. I remember when you were here last time, I think you said 30 days, and I'm like, well, no, no, we'll give you some time. We gave you 90, and you told us and looked us straight in the eye and said, zero problem whatsoever. I'll have this resolved in 90 days.
Correct. And I thank you for the grace period that you've given us so far, but I, there was a little bit of, there were some other issues that we had to deal with. If you know, if you remember, we had the, there's two yards, one on each side, the east side and the west side. The west side is what we're, the, I'm sorry, the east side is where the automobiles are being stored. When we took over the company, we, the automobiles were there. We really didn't, I wasn't in the automobile industry before this, when we took over the company. There's a UDL license that you need to actually move the cars from the purchase lot for the buyers at the other scrap, the mills to take. So that UDL license expired two weeks after our meeting, which we weren't aware of. So it's taking this long to get that finalized. That doesn't mean anything. First, we've been over there for six weeks processing those cars. There were 600 cars. So we thought there was 200 to 300, but as we got deeper into the pile, they were more compact, and each car takes 25 minutes to drain all the fluids out and get it to where it's EPA approved, so that when it gets to the other, the mills where they're crushed, there's no leakage and the UDL license doesn't get hurt for that. So we learned a lot going through this pile, which we couldn't see until we started digging down, and that was six weeks ago. But as they started draining the fluids out of these cars, we, I know we discussed that we had two bailers, and they were on the other side cleaning up that because the piles were so high over there, if you recall. And so our goal was to get that, those piles down, as long as the bailers weren't being used over there because it was taking so long to drain the fluids. We left them over there to process, so I don't know where the information came that it just started, but we've been working on these cars for six weeks straight. Prior to that, we were on the other side, keeping the baler going to get the piles down over there, because we redid the roads in the east yard to make it look better and to address a mud situation that we had coming out on the road over there. So there's a lot going on. We've got the, the license is going to be valid in a week. These, 300 of these cars are moved to my other yard in Aurora just to be stored after they were crushed. Some are still here, but more than three quarters of the work has been done. It's just taking longer. And literally, I mean, I could say 30 days, but if I can guarantee it within 60, certainly before snow, that yard's going to be completely empty. And we've got, now we see the end. We're into it. We know exactly what we're doing and how they're processed, which, to be honest with you, I wasn't aware of some of the things that we had to do to get this auto side of it processed. You know, I was in the metal business, but we never took cars. So, and we haven't taken any cars since our last meeting. So there, nothing's coming in, only going out on that side. So we've stopped it completely. Obviously, we can't buy them anyway with an invalid license. So I am-
I mean, counsel, we've been down this road before, and even before I became mayor, I've been, seen them go down this road before. You know, that's why we wanted to give you a 90-day extension exceeding what you recommended. And I understand, unforeseen circumstances, all that. Now you're saying, essentially you're an expert on what it takes to dispose cars, sounding like it.
I'm much better than I was.
And you're telling us 60-day extension and the whole yard's clean?
Clean now, except for our, I mean, it's a storage yard, and other than the special use, now, the special use permit does approve cars, but little, a few at a time, which they would be, no more than six or 10 would be there to be processed and shipped out. You wouldn't even see them at that point. And we wouldn't take another car or anything over there. I also have, it looks a lot worse than it, than what you're seeing, but there is a big pile of stress wire, they call it, from a demo job that we had picked up some rebar out of DeKalb, and they were stripped, they were shipping in stress wire, which was contaminated with some concrete on it, which you can see in one of these pictures. Makes it look a lot worse. It's kind of behind the cars. But that is there, and we've got a special crusher coming in for that, to process that, shred that, and disperse that, that's a whole nother job. But that is part of this pile you're seeing. But other than that, yes.
And have you been communicating with city staff, this issue, all through this 90-day process?
No.
No?
I am not. I mean, we've been, we knew the meeting was coming, but I'm not, no.
Why not reach out to city staff, letting us know that there's a potential delay?
Well, that's a good question. I just, I have not gone through this before. I just thought it would come out of the meeting. I probably should have.
Alderman Favor?
Yeah, well, that was going to be my point, is I-
I mean, I certainly should have.
I think I said before you left, if you need anything, let us know. We want to help you. The last thing we want to do is impact a business in our community. So it's kind of frustrating that we're literally all waiting to help you and to provide assistance, or just to communicate with you, and you didn't communicate back with us.
I understand. No, I certainly should have. I should have. I thought it would come out here today. I didn't know that.
But today is about revocation and not renewing your license.
I get it. I get it.
And for us, you realize this, every action that we take is precedence. So it opens up for someone else to get an extension, not adhere to it, and come back and want another extension. And this can be a pattern we're trying to avoid.
We did a lot of work. I mean, if you are looking at the before and after, this is three quarters of what it was. And I'm not saying, I didn't say it would all be gone, but as we got deeper, we started learning the depth of the problem we had. And I should have, I should have come in and discussed that. And I certainly would in the future if that was an issue.
Counsel, city manager.
So we want a realistic estimate here. So how long do you think it'll take?
I know I will be completely clean within 60 days. I would say 30, but I don't want this to happen again, and I don't know, I can't guarantee because of what's happened so far. So-
So-
We're good.
And I have been through this. On the other side, the fire department has been in, and we've given him documents of all the materials that have been shipped out, so he can see that more is going out than coming in. So we could open those roads and put down new roads, which we have done in the last 90 days, but I know that's not what we're here for. But yes, I'm well aware of reporting.
So please send that to Don Harper. And you two are acquainted, I know, you talk time to time.
Oh, I can see you.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you two can exchange, you probably have emails back and forth. But I mean, I mean, so this is Monday. So this is Friday, the first report, and then every Friday thereafter. And if you don't do it by this, the end of the 5 o'clock on Friday this week, then it's $1,000 when you send your next report next week. Just put a check with it, okay?
What exactly would you want in the report? And I just want to be clear.
I, we're down, our best estimate, right now, you said, I don't know what it is.
Okay.
On track for completion in 60 days.
We shipped this many this week, or at least we crushed this many, but break it down in a couple of different categories. We crushed this many, we got these off the yard. Just something-
I understand.
Alderman Smith?
Bill, I'm going to do you one better. Every day I go by and take a picture, get my coffee, and I go to your lot and I take a picture. So I think what I would like to have, and I want every Friday, along with what goes to Dawn, is a picture. Stand back and take a picture of that. I have a very, believe the everyday, a nice period. I don't live too far. My ward, residents are fed up. And I think counsel, you know, if we, if Dawn doesn't get what she wants, I will petition to have this brought back sooner than 60 days.
Understood.
That's-
Can you tell there's been a big dent?
Pardon?
Can you tell there's been a big dent?
Oh, yeah. I mean, today, before that, no.
And we appreciate that. But again, we're going back to the 90 days ago. And we're also going back to, in our community, we have various issues. And we want to do everything possible to help businesses, help our residents, help our landlords, like you heard earlier, if you were here at the beginning of the council meeting. But we have to set a standard at this point, that when we get to a point that we've met you halfway, we all agreed, we shook hands, we looked each other in the eye, made that promise, we get to that point, and the promises weren't kept, our tolerance for that at this point is almost zero. In this case, you've made a lot of good progress. I like the city manager's idea that you've already used to producing a weekly report. I love it. Send them a weekly report of progress. You're on track for completion in 60 days. A picture of the yard, you know? If you did that, if you failed to meet it on a Friday at 5 o'clock, we'll issue a $1,000 fine. Otherwise, I'm willing to extend it another 60 days to give you the cushion that you need to move forward. And I get, we all get, there's unforeseen circumstances and all that, and that's maybe why we're here at this point, and that's okay. But again, you got to realize, this isn't just about you. This is about how we operate as a city going forward. And that's the tone we're trying to set. So-
Understood.
Acceptable?
Yes.
All right, so I would take-
Mayor, last thing, just before we move on.
Yep.
It's Dan, right?
Danny, yeah.
Danny. And so our fire prevention lieutenant in the back, you heard the first item tonight. You sat through the whole meeting, I know. He has a role in that as well.
I'm sorry?
And he's got, he's got a role in apartment inspections and roomy house inspections and a lot of other things. And spending his time chasing down whether or not you move cars at the junkyard is not his primary duty. I'd like him to go back to his primary duty. So everything you do to cooperate is welcome to me. Okay, thank you.
And us. All right, so I would take, well, we need to modify the-
You have a motion to table, continue this?
Oh, okay, tabling it would be easier. But what about the requirements set forth? Does that need to be in the public record, or the fact that we talked about it, he agreed, we shook hands?
Yeah, I would call that a contract.
Okay, all right, we got a verbal contract then. So I would take a motion to table ordinance 2022-028.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor to table ordinance 2022-028. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
All right, tabling ordinance 2022-028 passes per those requirements. Look forward to hearing about the completion sooner than 60 days would be phenomenal.
Thank you very much.
You betcha. Have a good night, sir. All right, moving on to, yes, oh, city manager?
I think, so that's in effect four meetings from now. It's the October meeting, and it's the last meeting in November. We'll make sure that in the, in the regular correspondence that we expect that there will be that expectation, November 21st.
Okay.
I'll stop over Friday.
All right, moving on to agenda item M, ordinances first reading, ordinance 2022-047, authorizing a development agreement with American Marketing and Publishing Company. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
It's time to change the tone, because I think this is a very positive item.
That's awesome.
And I'll just take a couple of minutes in. And the owner of American Marketing Publishing has been sitting very patiently in the back of the room for some time and may want to address the council as well. So as I said in my background, we had a discussion, you're back at the end of July, about some plans that the Naring Electrical Works Company had for trying to rationalize some of their growth, which continues. And we all decided that was, in general, a good thing. But what happens in an established neighborhood, which has a mix of uses, as one piece of that pie goes out, moves out, and if the total area of the pie doesn't change, then somebody gets rubbed again and brushed against. And one way that played out was in the use of the streets for on-street parking or for travel back and forth from one business to another, for, in this case, for American Marketing's employees to get out of their parking lot onto Locust Street and to 10th Street or to 7th Street. So we have been talking with the ownership of the company, and it's been clear that that's one of the, one of the issues. But also, there's been a daily, early morning especially, competition race to see who can fill the parking spaces on North Ninth Street and also along Locust. And just because the Naring Electrical Works is open overnight, there are people almost always parked there, so there aren't as many spaces as desirable. So what could we do? Well, first of all, I wish that we had a Tiff district that covered that. Now, this is what that was made for, to help with private redevelopment and expansion. But we don't have that. So what can we do to help? Working with our very able city engineer, Zach Gill, we came up with some proposals that we presented to the ownership, and that led to this particular ordinance, which, by the way, we're bringing forward just for first reading only, but there's a, the ordinance would adopt a development agreement between the City of DeKalb and American Marketing and Publishing Company that would do the following. It would allow for perpendicular parking spaces on North Ninth Street. That involves the paving of the Parkway area. It involves also new access for ingress and egress on 10th Street, as shown on the graphic on page 13 in your background. And that also adds some additional parking spaces, about 10 additional spaces on the established parking lot for American Marketing's employees. And then a cross easement also on Locust. I think over time, the American Marketing employees will prefer to use the other and newer ingress and egress. But this won't be, at this point, the end of September, we're not, we're not going to get all of that done. That's going to have to be done in 2023, starting when construction starts. And we will blend our proposal, our suggested improvements with our street maintenance program. So there's some economies there in cost. But it would, should make a dramatic difference. It also doesn't interfere with what we had talked about for the Naring Electrical Company's interest in having the vacation of Locust Street and Ninth, just down, you can see in the graphic, it's the very north end where Ninth hits into Locust, that would, enough of that would allow for trucks to, semi-trailers to pull, heading south and then backing into the loading dock, and then moving, maneuvering straight through down to Lincoln Highway. So there's room for two-way traffic on Ninth Street as, in addition to the perpendicular spaces. We would want to do these in concert with one another. This is a neighborhood improvement project in effect. I put this on first because but for what we were talking about with the Naring Electric Company, their, the ownership of American Marketing Publishing would not necessarily look to do anything with us. So the quid pro quo is their cooperation, their willingness to recognize that things will change on Locust Street. They still have a cross access easement to use that. I think over time, the preference will go to the other newer entrances. So I'll stop there. And Abe may have something he wants. Do you want to say?
I can listen. I appreciate that you worked at the Naring Department and the city manager's team. And partly I wanted to come because I'm a manager, but-
Abe, you better, you better come up.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Yeah. So they can hear you.
I thought it might just be a no, and then, so, yeah.
I will just share that this is a plan that obviously I've endorsed. I'm comfortable with it. It's a good solution to actually a good problem. They're two growing businesses and bumping into each other. I really respect the guys at Naring running a manufacturing business. In 2022, it's, they're a big employer, they're a good employer. We always try to be a good employer also, and we're growing. And this is a solution that actually works. It's a creative solution that makes us whole as we lose a couple of corners on our property. And I don't think that we'll be set back by it. I'm comfortable with it. So, appreciate it.
And I should mention, I mentioned in the background, but Abe is running a very quiet, growing, but very substantial company. And when we do our audit every year, one of the pages, reference pages usually toward the back of that tome, is going to show the top 10 employers in our community. And American Marketing is in that top 10, seven or six. It's very, you know, teeters between one or the other, but has been for many years, as long as I remember looking at our audit. So thank you for your investment in us.
Alderman McAdams?
I happen to know one of your employees very well in your customer experience department, and I've learned more about your Optima program and conversations over dinner. It's an excellent program. It works well for small businesses. It's a way to access larger audiences for businesses, and it's an extraordinary item that you produce. And-
Appreciate it.
Counsel? I appreciate your cooperation in this, because that neighborhood, I mean, we've got industrial, we've got commercial, we've got residential. There's a lot of, lot going on there. And the fact that you're willing just to be part of a better solution, I think is absolutely phenomenal. And I would agree with Alderman McAdams. In the community, I've worked with multiple of your staff members, and it's always just, it's a phenomenal team. You have a great company. Definitely should be proud of it, which I assure you are.
Thank you.
But again, thanks for being so cooperative on this.
It was great.
Yeah. All right, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2022-047 passes on first reading, and we're going to let that stand. That's all the American Marketing Publishing components, right?
Mm-hmm.
Abe, you are more than welcome to leave. You've waited a long time, so we won't be offended by that at all. So you betcha. All right. Moving on to ordinance number two, ordinance 2022-048, authorizing a development agreement with Naring Electrical Works Company. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. And this is essentially what you saw to the detail back on July 25th. But thereafter, as we were discussing with the ownership of American Marketing, we, we wanted to make sure that we worked out that piece and that we bring this back. And once again, we'd like to see this on first reading so we could bring both of these forward for approval on the same night and with the same level of support. So it's essentially the same as what you told us was agreeable to you back then.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2022-048 passes on first reading. Now, number three, ordinance 2022-049, approving the annexation of certain property to the city of DeKalb after road right-of-way from East Gurley Road to Kesslinger Road. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, city manager.
Well, with your approval of this, we, we have to always now call this the after road, not the city's rural road, that you very supportively have helped us through for the last couple of years, actually. Zach Gill has been working for the, for the same period of time and getting the engineering done for that, that property which we purchased back in 2020. And what's before you tonight is, is a necessary step that needs to be taken. We, we have an owned road, but not an annex road. And if we're going to be contiguous with properties south and east and southwest of Facebook, we need to annex that property. We, kind of a curiosity. So that's what this is about. The planning commission recognized the importance of that, planning zoning commission, and on September 19th voted six to zero to recommend your support. We support their recommendation.
Counsel? Hearing no questions or comments, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2022-049 passes, and that brings us to ordinance 2022-050.
Can we go to wave second and?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I take a motion to waive second reading for ordinance 2022-049?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2022-049. Thank you. I was in the mode of, we wanted to keep everything at first reading. All right. Number four, ordinance 2022-050, approving the rezoning of the after road right-of-way from East Gurley Road to Kesslinger Road from the SFR1 single-family residential district to HI heavy industrial district, city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith, city manager.
So now our 66-foot wide strip needs to be properly zoned, consistent with the zoning in the, the neighborhood. And that's what's proposed here, the HI heavy industrial district zoning. It's still going to be a road, still going to be after road, but that's, that's going to also help with the contiguity and future annexation. So the planning and zoning commission took this up on September 19th, and likewise voted to support it six to zero. We support their recommendation.
Counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2022-050 passes on first reading. I would now take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2022-050 has been, had second reading waived. All right. Moving on to agenda item N, council member reports. Who would like to kick it off? Alderman McAdams.
I had the pleasure of going to the Illinois Municipal League's annual convention in Chicago this weekend. The presentations were informative as usual. It's interesting to attend that as a experienced alderman versus the first time that I went when I was new. There was a lot to learn. This time, there was a lot to review, and I was happy to see that most of the information that I had gleaned from being an alderman has been part of the overall project, the program. The most informative presentation that I attended was on Saturday, early Saturday morning, learning about state resources for brownfields, which is important to the fifth ward because we have a brownfield at the former Protono site. And so that was an opportunity for us to learn about many things that, it was a wonderful experience, a learning of all the different state options. And so we're looking forward to following up on that in the time being. And I should mention that the moderator of that particular moment was the mayor, in fact. So that was kind of a fun coincidence that I showed up that morning and, oh, there's the mayor. So it's definitely worth the time and the money that we spend on that. I do actually believe that that has great value for the city. When you go downstairs to the convention, there are all these tables set up with all these different things that you can purchase. They did not seem to serve our needs necessarily, but it was good to know that these programs and projects are out there, and it was just a very informative time.
Was there any money on those tables?
Not a bit.
Alderman Smith?
No report tonight.
Alderwoman Larson?
I usually try to drive around the city and just see different things that are going on. And especially after a meeting like tonight where we were talking about really big and really heavy projects. Sometimes it's the small things that our departments do all the time that may touch and impact, like 40 feet of sidewalk that connected to, in a neighborhood, that Zach and, and his, his crew have gotten done. And Andy with the new signs back in Greek Row.
Those are great.
And I was like, oh my God, look at those signs. You have to drive by, fabulous. And so I don't want the, the little things that really just make that little icing on the cake of our city to go unnoticed. So thank you for all the departments and all you do.
Thank you.
Great. Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
I have a couple of items. One is, I had mentioned the Young Eagles event that was a week ago. There was actually 84 children came out for, to receive a free flight. It was an extra, it was supposed to, the event was supposed to be for two hours, but there were so many kids that it went another half an hour beyond that. So there were even people as far away, coming to DeKalb from as far away as Elgin, South Elgin, and just around the area. And then I was going to say, I participated in the corn classic. I know the mayor's going to have a lot more to say about that.
Just a little.
But I just did want to say, you know, for the city staff, for, you know, police, EMS, Public Works, just, you know, notifying people, putting up barricades, directing traffic, just fantastic job. And then afterwards, I was walking across downtown DeKalb, and I was like, man, this downtown looks so nice with the changes that we've made. So just congratulations, just a great job, you know, for the city staff and just the hard work that you guys have put in. It's really paying off. Thank you.
Great. That's awesome. For myself, I went to, well, every month, we have a meeting with NIU leadership, city manager Nicholas and I. And as always, it's a great meeting. We have a great partner with Northern Illinois University. And right now, our conversations are steering towards how can we work together as entities to address the pop-up parties that are happening in our community, which when they do occur cause a substantial amount of property damage, as well as a lot of angst from property owners. And more importantly, it draws our police resources away from well-needed incidences in order to monitor parties that have 200, 300, 400 people at them, which I look forward to that continued discussion with NIU. Because if I read the pass on correctly, there was a large party that we were monitoring, and shots were being fired at Triffrat, and someone in the party in front of officers whipped out a gun and started shooting at the direction of Triffrat. Realize there's 300 people around here, and a majority of them are students at these parties. That could have gone absolutely, absolutely south. So that conversation with Northern Illinois University, I look forward to continuing. We're all coming to the table to figure out how we can work on that as a partnership. But that's a conversation that needs to continue, and I know will continue, and both want that. I also attended the IML conference. It was a great conference. We got to see our governor's candidates, gubernatorial candidates, actually present their cases. I thought that was very interesting. But also attended a Freedom of Information Act and Open Meetings Act session, which was phenomenal. Despite how we're portrayed in the press sometimes, I think the city council goes out of their way, and with the city attorney making sure that if we do go into closed session, we're going in it for the right reasons. And if we're incorrect on that, then we release the recordings accordingly. We also do a great job, I think, of responding to FOIA requests and trying to be as transparent as possible. And I got to thank city staff for working so hard, and our FOIA officer, Scott Zach, for working so hard addressing that. And when I was around other community, communities and hearing what goes on, I understand the reasoning for FOIA and Open Meetings Act, definitely. But the city of DeKalb, I think, has a high standard there, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Also, I went to Citizens Community Enhancement Commission meeting. That's always fun because they've got so many projects going on, from wrapping utility boxes to painting fire hydrants, to also some substantial mural projects that are coming to the table now at this point, which are going to be exciting to see unfold. Also had a crime-free housing discussion with the landlords on the 20th, as we mentioned, with DARA representatives and other landlords, really trying to make sure that we get the crime-free housing ordinance correct the first time. 22nd, I was at Oak Crest Rotary, presented over lunch, basically a state of the city, what's going on, answered all their questions, which is always just a fun part of this particular job, meeting with residents and listening to them, talk about what concerns them, and also being able to inform them on everything that's going on at the city. I also spoke at the Business Leadership Academy that Bruce Griffith puts on. It was five area high schools that seniors go through that particular program. So I got to talk to them about a variety of topics, which I've done for the, over the last 10 years, which is always just fun. Also, I mentioned Maury and Joan Drury, their celebration, which was a great party, and the DeKalb Corn Classic. Thank you, Alderman Favor. That race happened on Sunday. I too want to thank our fire department, our police department, Andy and your team. My gosh, it was just absolutely wonderful. But the city really does a great job for all events, not just the Corn Classic, but it doesn't matter what's going on, it could be Corn Fest itself. They do a great job trying to make sure that there's cool and fun things to do in our community. And at the DeKalb Corn Classic, we had a record number of runners this year, which was phenomenal. There were almost 700 people, seeing our community, seeing Northern Illinois University, and just had an absolutely phenomenal time. So busy couple of weeks as always, but in the city of DeKalb, it seems like there's always a busy couple of weeks, which is great. With that, city manager.
Yes. So this is something of a first. I have a staff proclamation to read. Would you all rise, please? Whereas it is Mayor Barnes' birthday. Whereas this young, passionate man unselfishly serves the city of DeKalb, and whereas it is fitting to honor him, now therefore we here to applaud his extraordinary service by singing this song.
Oh.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. That was incredibly, incredibly awkward for me. So let's just go ahead and move on. Thank you, city manager. Oh my God. All right. So we are moving into, oh, what? Nope. Okay. We're moving into, hang on, let me get to the agenda item. So agenda item O, executive session. At this time, I would like approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss personnel as provided for in five ILCS 120 slash 2C1. Can I have a motion? What?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. I am just all out of sorts now. So thank you for that. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
All right.